What do you think? Um. Okay. She's done.
All right, can you want the recording?
You need to reenact. Perfect. You reenact.
Sorry.
I just left you some notes on my paper there of who made the motion to second. It's 503.
Thank you. Okay, do you want me to do all?
Uh, we got it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you have everybody's name? Get it, John?
No, could I please state your names?
Michael Wolvan, Wolvan Engineering.
Hey.
I'm Joe Grant.
Hi.
I'm Mark Bergerson, 401 Burke.
So this is revised plan that you guys submitted before. I'll give us an overview of what's changed.
Sure, it's the same basic site plan that we presented to you and through preliminary site plan and package. I did bring updated landscape plans here today. They haven't been served in the final package, but I have landscape plans to present here. One of the conditions for my preliminary site plan approval was removing the outdoor storage, so now that is no longer shown on plan. Otherwise, the building orientation is in the same location. Yeah, there's, that's a, together that's the site plan. It's inside.
Okay.
Okay. This is all the, yeah. So again, we remove the outdoor storage. We had a wetland entry, we remove signage. We will be removing the, seeking a permit to remove the wetlands on our site, so this plan complements removing those wetlands. It does create an issue where there's a riparian setback based on the current wetlands. By removing the wetland, we therefore need a variance on riparian. We've submitted for that variance. Who would ask for this rule to be in condition on BZA approval, where that variant is. We've made the landscaping changes, some of the changes to earth in front of the building, south side of the driveway. Also modified the fence in the locations to share with you, see, fencing, little chain link fence in one part. We made the changes that were at the last meeting. Do you understand a site plan approval, that's still in the works? Would you like to condition that and submit to staff or? Would you like to apply with all the sidelined applications?
Okay. Mr. President, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant sort of addressed most of my comments really related to landscaping and so I'll look at those. I can, I'd be glad to look at them administratively. I did feel that final plan approval could be considered, subject to administrative review, if that's okay with the commission. So I'll be glad to look at those landscaping items, make sure that they achieve what the commission wanted from the preliminary plan approval. The only thing we did talk about was attempting to eliminate, maybe you could talk through that, eliminate the chain link or fencing in general along Freeway Drive, if there was a way to avoid screening that frontage area. You were, I think you were going to look at that out of the preliminary plan approval.
I don't recall all the specifics, but there was a reason that we showed fencing around the stormwater basin, that's a secret. There was a reason we were showing fencing around that. I mean, that's why the fencing was there, too.
For safety.
For safety purposes around the storm.
If I can ask the engineer, if they grade it flatter with less slope, could they avoid fencing?
That would make it a safer condition. I'm not sure exactly what code requires we have to be that particular part of code, so.
And this is just a preference, I mean, so it's up to the commission, but I'm of the opinion if you can make it flatter with less slope, I don't know, three on one, that you could avoid the chain link, unless the code specifically sets that.
We're going to acquire a larger grain base of.
I mean, there'd be, I think you'd have to take a look at it.
Yeah, it may, you know.
The basin now is designed with three to one or four to one slopes. I don't have it labeled here, but we wouldn't have it in Stephen's net anyway.
Sure.
So if the commission would rather not have a fence between Freeway Drive and the basin, then the fence could be then brought down along buildings for security purposes, and that would be better.
And that, that was my understanding.
Something about operating basins is not letting you show that.
So the fence comes around, ties into the building, and you don't have fencing across the building, because the building is the fence, right? Okay. Then it picks up around the rest of the way, till the building, until it's the face.
So if, make sure we, we remove this fence, fence down, is there?
I guess maybe that's something to, maybe Joe can look into, and you guys can decide, you know, if it needs to be there, put it around the bases. If he determines that it probably doesn't need to be based on slopes or whatever, then run it up into the interior. It has to be there.
Yeah, we'll review our local code, Chairman.
We're happy with yours.
Anything else?
Um, no, that was, that was it. Substantially, if related to the landscaping, I do, I think you guys did a nice job on eliminating that gravel and complying with requirements, switching that fence type to something a little more decorative and, and just as a reminder, there's no off-street, or, I'm sorry, no onsite outdoor storage involved in this project, just for the record. And then lighting plan will be fine in the review initially.
Mr. Roddick, you have?
Well, there were some comments by our design consultant. Did you happen to see those?
Yeah, we have, we have seen them. I was talking to the team between the last meeting and this meeting, some of the things that we want to clarify, basically she'd stated that it's highly visible from the interstate, but when you drive down through there, you really don't see the property until you're past it, you have to be looking backwards. Is that still a viable?
I think she had some things actually relating to the HVAC.
There is no HVAC.
No, okay. Yeah, I didn't think that there would be. Well, anyway, I, I think that we could work through, Mr. Chairman, anything administratively with our design consultant and their team.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get to drive up to somebody and want to actually take a look at it, but you're saying it's, it's not, it's not a visible issue, I thought it was.
Wait, and talk about the materials again that are in the building. Is it, that's?
It's the exact same building, a space place in the building that is currently in business. It's the exact same building in Gerald, that's about three properties, that's the sound of the current property.
And there was an elevation submitted on it.
Okay.
Was it Mr.? Is that why? That's all I had, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. You guys already addressed what was my biggest concern, was filling the wetlands and filling within the riparian setback. Sounds like you guys are going to apply to BZA for a variance to fill within the riparian setback, so that's good, we'll let BZA act on that item. We would just need a copy of the permit from the Army Corps authorizing the remainder of the, the fill, or the fill and the remainder of the wetlands. And to Brian's point, we can review the lighting plan administratively. That's all I got, Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Yes, per the city ordinance, that any structure that's 300 feet off the road is required to have a yard hydrant on an eight-inch line. So we may have to position a yard hydrant somewhere on the property there.
We'll review that.
Yeah, I could not determine based on the ice middle where, how far that building, the long building, how far that was from the street. And I couldn't determine where the hydrants are at in relationship to the property line and where the drive was going to be for the hydrant that's on the street.
I believe there's three hydrants on that property.
Pardon?
I believe there's two or three hydrants already on that portion.
They're not on the property, there's some at the street.
Right on.
Well, but yeah, that won't satisfy the city ordinance.
And to Don's point, the, both of the neighboring properties to the north, I believe, have a yard hydrant, is that correct? Oh, pardon me, both neighboring properties to the south. There are no properties to the north. They both also have the yard hydrant.
The printing, the printing business and the sign shop, yeah.
I like to be an issue, just look into that and work it out if there's questions. Commission, do you guys have any?
I have a question. Maybe for Mr. Gelati. I read your notes, you said we could approve preliminary site plan, but then you have, as long as we get Northeast Ohio sewer district approval, a grading plan, stormwater, and then you mentioned the Corps of Engineers, can we still approve it and wait, wait for, do all these things, wait administratively, do you think?
Yes, I think the answer is yes, yeah. That's correct, Mr. Cox. Most of those comments I have there are really just for the applicant's knowledge as to what to expect when we review administratively for the final permitting and with regards to the Army Corps permit. They've indicated on their plans here, the wetlands, where the wetlands exist and which wetlands they intend to fill, which is fine by us so long as they can provide us.
You just wait for these approvals from all these entities.
Correct.
The last thing I had, maybe Mr. Roddick, he mentioned what Pam Schultz, our, our design person, who is not here, but, I don't know, she, she had split face block, not compatible with a neighbor, and I, I don't know, this is on Freeway Drive, I'm not quite sure, can we go ahead and not worry about that?
How are you going to comment on that, if you don't mind me turning off? Yeah, go ahead. So I, I think that, I did read through the comments, I tended to agree with it, but I think what they've done here in terms of getting a buffer and kind of breaking this facade up with some landscaping and stuff, I think in my opinion would be acceptable. I know that these types of structures kind of jogging in and out doesn't, they lose some efficiencies in that sense. So I think by what they've proposed from a landscaping standpoint is somewhat acceptable. The roof material, I would like to comment on that and say that I think that looking at colors that are similar to what the neighboring buildings are would be advised. I think the colors that you guys had selected were a little bit lighter in color than the neighboring materials.
So imagine the color, like you did the same.
I'm okay with the, the material on that. I don't, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be a, an asphalt shingle, but I think.
It's too, too shallow.
I thought the same thing, too. So I think that as long as that color plays off of the colors of the neighboring buildings, I don't have any issues with concerning that. And I think the landscaping kind of helps create that buffer for the type of use that it is, I don't have any issues with that.
Yeah, I agree. In the area with that much, you know, good landscaping plan up in front, that's shielding pretty good. See, you haven't to go extensive on the architecture.
I agree. Though I have more landscaping than the neighborhood is anyway, so.
I agree. It's just going to get blocked at the end of the day anyway, so.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we could, to them, we could give approval, final approval, but a couple of things, landscaping will be reviewed administratively just because it came kind of late. Lighting could be reviewed administratively. We have to make a contingent on BZA approvals for a couple of, a couple of items, and, you know, all the engineering comments would have to be addressed, but that's pretty typical. Mr. President, you have any?
I think that was, that's pretty, pretty accurate, yep.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion for final plan approval, pending BZA approval for items that are in front of them, administrative review of the landscaping, administrative review of the lighting, and applies with the engineering comments.
Go ahead with the comment I would have, since the roof color gets, matches neighboring building, it's a darker color than what's on.
That's a little motion. As my motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
All right. Any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pose? All right. Still got a little stuff to do, but. Next item, Panda Express. Come on up.
I give.
Oh, we did, oh, I'm sorry. Yep. All right. What's your name for the record?
My name's Eric Adlin, with, I'm a venture architect, architect with Panda Express. So this will be the first time you all are seeing this, this is a preliminary site plan approval. What we're proposing is redevelopment of the Golden Corral site, and the, I want to give you visibility of the overall scheme, we're looking at eventually having two buildings on this site, two quick serve restaurants. One is known as Panda Express, the future development currently is unknown, but they're marketing it as a drive-through type restaurant. So what we're here today to really focus on is development of the Panda Express portion of it. It'd be a 2,300, 2,400 square foot building with a drive-through. Site itself has about 41 parking spaces with anywhere from, depending on height and measure, 13 to, you know, eight stacking spaces for the drive-through. We measure it typically in a 20-car stack, which is about, you know, the size of a parking space, so that's how we look at the stacking. And before we spill out on Golden Lake, we end up with 15 cars, so it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good ratio for their operations, the way they run, the timing and the, and the process through. They keep the menu board around the eighth car, because it takes more time for them to fill the order than it does for people to give the order, so the menu board's a little bit further back in the queue. The future restaurant would have the drive-through entry on the mountainside, so there is no concern that, that queuing folks would spill out on the Golden Lake Boulevard since they own the north side of the site. Back to the building, it's a, like I said, a 2,300, 2,400 square foot building, we'll have about maybe 60-something seats inside, and they are really working towards the different deliverable options, such as third-party carryout, and of course, drive-through is a big portion of their business. It's a type 5B building right now, designed to the Westman Reserve, working with Ms. Schultz on design items and customizing, trying to keep the brand, but a lot of that brand is being eliminated just because we can't, yeah, just on the, you know, so, you know, we've designed the building, a couple versions sent over to Pam, and we've responded to her comments, and we're still looking forward to the final design. You know, for the most part, we can kind of talk about issues that are raised on the comment list, and I can address those directly. We've worked a lot with Mr. Collins on getting to this point, making it preliminary as the middle, and there's just a few outstanding items on landscape that I think we can address, and if you don't mind, I can start in on those, so.
Right, so do you want to just have him dive into your comments, or would you like to give an overview of your comments?
It's nice when the applicant wants to do my job, he's very welcome anyway.
Why don't you have Mr. President, give a couple, give us comments and then just kind of explain it to us in his words and then?
Mr. Westworth is trying to make me earn that money.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So, Mr. Chairman, I will say, they've done a great job, they've been really easy to work with, and Ms. Schultz and I have all had conversations with them, so all of that is very accurate, or a question of that. So my comment letter is, is really pretty minimal. So the one issue that I identified early was the potential lot split, and who, what, where, and why, how do you measure from where, and what's the lot going to be? And basically what Panda's come back and said, we know we're going to do something in a location where the existing restaurant is now, that's going to be demoed, and on that side, there'll be, there'll be some building at some point that won't attend right now. So essentially, they're trying to design it to a future division line, but right now they're not prepared to submit that division line until they know exactly who is going to ultimately land in that spot, which is fine, I think. And so it did clear up a lot of the concerns I initially had identified. I think that, again, in the future, there will be lots of applying legal descriptions, cross-access easements needed to accentuate the plan, but I think that is something that will come in the future. And that's basically my first comment on my August, my August 7th letter. And then I still haven't seen existing conditions map, I may have missed it, it's pretty miniscule, but just to show the, on a separate map, separate page, and existing conditions, here's what exists now, then the future site plan will show the future conditions. And then the rest of my, my comment letter really deals with landscaping and the lighting levels. The landscaping, and it sounds like the applicant's prepared to streetkeep and landscape items, but it does look like there were a few deficiencies as it relates to the criteria for the development of outlots in the crossings, and so I noted those, and where I felt like there may be a potential issue. I can go through each of those, and they're listed out here, they're item number three. It might be best if the applicant just addresses those and notes either that I missed it on the side review, or they'll address it, or it'll be addressed, in some cases, it might not be, you know, be addressed until the future, when the next building comes in to be able to provide that, that landscape room between properties. And then the lighting, cut sheet, shot drawings, it'd be submitted with lighting and future application, maximum full candle, starting with one-foot candle at the property lines. Lighting, it looks like it complies now, but it may not, again, in the future, so it's just something to be cognizant of in the future when this occurs, need to be at that one-foot candle at the property lines, the toolboard lights filling up to the handle of property. With that said, again, I do think that they did a very nice job, both on the architecture and the site plan side of life, would recommend approval, subject to the comments in here. Do you think if anyone wants to walk through those landscape items, or I can, does it matter?
I think I really just want to address, well, for like I said, for the most part, we can address all of these and identify either where it wasn't marked, or marked, or where it wasn't clear. Couple items that I do want to bring to your attention that I think we're going to, it could be online, offline discussion, but when, was the item, the 25-foot barrier along the right-of-way, so B1, and you do have a 25-foot setback, currently basically the existing curb line, and are you referring to the little notch that is on the plat where the property line jogging, where Ohio storm has taken, sort of adjusted the property line and taken that? That's the only place where the property line dips below 25 feet, but per plat, the landscape buffer is continuous across 25, it doesn't recognize that bump out, so I want to make sure that I'm clear as to what your comment is and what location that is.
Something sitting in there?
There's a, I think there's a storm structure inside in the right-of-way, and that feeds a larger system, but, but not on the car side.
Yeah, and where, so you'll need to provide that same 25 feet along Golden Lake Boulevard, where it intersects with 82, so that's a future lot issue. You have it now, because it's.
Yeah, that, yeah, right, right, and that would, that would continue across, it's like we might nick the corner, right, and that's.
Well, you have signage there, I think that's probably okay. But all I'm saying is the future lot split, where you develop that parcel, you'll still need that frontage requirement along. And then, you know, you, you don't currently have on the condition on the property, I don't believe, we'll see that on the existing conditions map, but I don't think you have on Golden Lake Boulevard on the south side, parallel to 82, I don't think you have 25 feet there. And I'm not sure.
Now, that's a, that only is an eight, eight-foot landscape buffer requirement along the injured, along the inside, you're talking about the south side of Golden Lake Boulevard?
Yeah.
That's only an eight-foot buffer requirement, and then a five-foot sidewalk. And we've got, I think, 10-foot there before the five-foot sidewalk.
Could you consider that to be an internal roadway?
Yes.
And that, that.
And even the, even the Golden Lake access drive, while it does have a 50-foot building setback, which we would adhere to per plat, the landscape buffer per plat on that side as well is eight foot with 15-foot utility easement on that side. We probably are close to 25, but we're probably more like, we're probably more like 20-foot on that side, but I think that's, that's some of the clarification that we can work through.
Yeah, I think that, and we can, I can look in there if it's just pertains to external roads versus internal roads.
Are those public roads in there, Golden Lake up to a certain point?
So Golden Lake Boulevard is a public road as you enter from Route 82, and then only as you make a left-hand turn, so as you go east all the way to the cul-de-sac by Great Escape. If you go straight or right through that initial intersection, it's, becomes private property owned by Target or Lowe's.
So that may, that may impact, I mean, maybe something.
So, yes, this part.
I don't think it's like an internal.
It's still, it's still eight foot by, by plat, and that's also reiterated in the OEA agreement of the shopping center, that, that drive is an eight-foot buffer. The 82 drive is handled with a 25-foot buffer, and those are all identified per plat, and that's what the existing shopping center currently has.
And that may be, like, H1A1 does note the eight-foot wide buffer on the owner's property between the common property line and the owner's paved surface, and that does speak to abiding the proposed dedicated access roadway, so that, everyone could be what that means, is that Golden Lake Boulevard, even though it's a public road, it's only an eight-foot buffer. So that, I think I agree, the inter, we can internally clarify if that's the case.
And then, really, the, all the other ones, like I said, we can, we can work through, and when we come to the subdivision issue, it's that buffer between properties, it'll show up again, not only to, to the east with Panera, but if we subdivided a lot, we would need five foot on each side of that property line to have a landscape buffer. So we're sort of re, relooking at that concept and not subdividing, so the OEA agreement allows us not to subdivide, to put two buildings on one lot. I think the question then is to just ensure that, I believe that planning currently allows us to have two buildings on one lot, just like the Westman Shopping Center, then we would just have a new situation and not have a subdivided lot. It would be a single lot at 6A, and there would be two. It would be a single lot at 6A, and there would be two buildings, it would be arbitrarily parked, so that there would be no shared parking grid needed, everybody would be self-contained, but we would forego the lot split, develop it like more of a holistic shopping center or site plan, and then eliminate that five-foot buffer on each side of the...
I would concur with that, definitely a strong possibility if they went that route.
There's news.
Okay.
I was going to say, if I may comment, I would actually agree, and I should prefer to sit in that type of situation, whether it's just one drive coming into both these lots, and they both separated out. My, one of my comments and concern was this, and I know it's proposed, being so close to this intersection, and then potentially that would actually give you guys a little bit of additional snacking space here, possibly before any potential congestion to get onto Golden Lake Boulevard, so I would be in favor of seeing this just as one lot, and then one drive, which goes their own way.
Mr. Joyce, can I tell, he's going to break my, you know...
Well, yeah, when, when it was my turn, I was going to bring up exactly that point, very good, thank you, and I guess, to the, yeah, thank you, Chairman, I appreciate that. Well, I have it in my memo, so it is in the record, I said it first, but, back to the, the point we're discussing right now, to leave it as one lot, has a lot of benefits, just like you described, I think it's probably a good thing to do. My only question, and I don't know that we have to answer it on the spot, is, you know, are we able to have two buildings on one piece of property, or do we need some type of variance to make that happen?
Yeah, I think it's okay, it's an ownership issue, so it'd be, as the applicant stated, a lease, there wouldn't be a piece of the ownership, and so I think that's...
What did you think about bringing these together to assemble the driveway?
We had options that looked at that, they might multiple means of egress, even if they're just developing a single one-acre lot, which one restaurant, multiple means of egress and ingress is always preferable for delivery trucks or traffic flow. I know there's a concern about the proximity to the existing, you know, intersection of Golden Lake. We're shifting over about 60 feet to make that second drive, and I think, I would anticipate that to be more of an exit, rather than, you know, backup for entry, backup for the future use of drive-through, all of that stuff would be funneling through that first, that first curb cut. I can certainly present it, we can look at it, if, or if you...
I really would not like to see two driveways that close together, considering you got offset, so Lowe's, you got these two, and then you are off close to this, that's backing to that, you don't have the return lane space to stack, and so whether most people use this and how, somebody's going to use this and that. I think if you draw it together, you've got the perfect eye, and it just, to me, is much safer and more concise. I don't think either the sites would justify two driveways from a traffic standpoint, if they really wanted to, I think Mr. Joyce, I, your comment again...
It's already been stolen, continue.
Yeah, if, if they want to do two driveways, if that's a very strong feeling, they should probably have the traffic study done, to show justification, need to save that, but I don't think they need it necessarily for the traffic study, if it's a single driveway, to be sure.
A single driveway would essentially be the existing driveway, and, you know, that, that restaurant is like 10,000 square feet already, and so, you know, you're, you're, we're only at maybe half of that, so sure, the traffic is not Golden Corral traffic, but you're, you're still using the existing condition.
Yeah. Okay, just to work, would the plan be to take down the Golden Corral, day one, whether you've got something planned for this or not?
Yes, so phase one would really demo the Golden Corral, turn that into a side, stabilize it, we do the pavement on the other half that we're basically showing here, and it gets operational and running. If, if the timing works out well, and they can get on board and get in there before construction's completed, great, if not, it just becomes a construction site while they're, while they're operating.
Okay.
But the, definitely, Golden Corral goes away, you come from, and it's just kind of the timing right now, is when that happens, does it happen, you know, well before we get permits and start construction, just to get it out of there, or when they mobilize and do the...
Yeah, if it's been determined that that building is not usable for something else, you know, if it's not, I'd rather just get gone from day one to day one, or first. Yeah, it doesn't have to be, but once they start, it'd be nice just to wipe it out, get it slightly cleaned and scrubbed.
Because if it doesn't happen, now we've taken someone apart, and if someone does cheaply, I want to use that building, they're parking, they're turning, they're turning.
I agree. Joe, you have other comments, or...
I can give an opinion, I think the building should come down right away. Yeah, and it should use one, you're going to only have one parcel, you should use one single access point. I mean, 30 feet, 6 inches for the existing driveway is darn near close to an industrial road width.
Same. Yeah, it's nice, because if you're pulling below the driveway across from, you're kind of direct from that, I think it's, that's, you can't even pull it, it's a nice, good-sized driveway. Sir, you have...
I have your comments, we can...
Joe, did we cover all your stuff, or do you have anything?
Yeah, our newest member stole, I thunder, we'll forgive him, it's his first meeting, so, no, we've already talked about the traffic, I think we've got a handle on that. The only other noteworthy item I had on my memo was that the plans that were submitted actually showed the two buildings sharing a, one sanitary connection out to the road. In the end, it's really Summit County Sewers' call, they would be permitting the connection, I'm sure that they would not permit two properties to share one connection. Now, if you leave it as one parcel of land, like you're discussing here, I don't know if that changes anything, and Summit County Sewers' eyes are not, I guess I can't speak for them, but I've kind of got a feeling that they won't want to see a shared connection.
Yeah, we're going to, we're starting to have some better conversations with them, because the, we really don't want to cut into 82, that's, nobody wants that, so if we can find a solution where, I mean legally, we would work it out with just easements and things there, but I can understand it's 8-inch line from that manhole back to the main, so if we can convert it to a public line, make them satisfied, or get them comfortable with using two services in an angle client, which there's plenty of capacity, so we should both get that split.
Yeah, so that is a possibility, if you can convert it to a public sewer main, and have Summit County Sewer take ownership of it, then that might be the solution, yeah, otherwise, a, a cut, an opening of Route 82 would actually need a permitting from ODOT, so that you're aware. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's all I got, everything else is pretty routine.
Just to make the applicant aware that, once you get into the construction phase, that we use the 2017 Ohio Fire Code, not because your paperwork listed Texas as your home base, I'm not sure if you...
We do work pretty much all over the Midwest, from Minnesota to Houston, I don't manage Toronto, but it's been my first time in this area, so...
It would probably be great to vet that temporarily for the demo of the building.
Oh, yeah, sure, right.
Mitchell, what do you got?
Maybe even market?
There definitely is, and she had some comments, it sounds like you've been working with her, with, with, um, I don't know if you've got any other thoughts?
I do have a few comments, now, after I've read through what Pam had provided as well, I kind of would echo a couple of the comments that she had made. Overall, I think it's, it's a great-looking building, I think it does conform to what we're looking for here in Massa Dune. A couple of her comments in regards to possibly looking at where you have the comment number two for her, the smooth line going here used for banding, should be a mental banning element. If there's any way to possibly pull that out a little bit and add some kind of a reveal to that, I think that would be acceptable, I don't think any different materiality or adding another type of material or something like that would go in the necessary, I think as long as it has chamfered to the work, give it a little bit of depth, that's, that's acceptable. And then the only question that you had before, are, do you know exactly what the pitch of your towers are on the roof lines on here?
On the towers themselves?
On the towers or the overall building and such?
I know that, no, you know, the, my designer, Linda, she's listening most likely, she worked really hard on laying out these roofs and getting the pitches to work on the towers themselves.
Okay.
I can get back to you on that, I know the Mansard portion is really steep, and we're looking at trying to flare out the bottom of it so that it levels off a little bit more. The challenge with the scale of this building, because it's only, maybe 35, 40 by 60...
Right.
Everything looks just, just off, because we're not as long as, as like Panera or Choupley, where the kind of longer those, those things, so I can get, I can follow up with those pitches.
And then the only other question I had was, when you do this Mansard roof, are you, is in here almost kind of like a well or a pool area, where the mechanical equipment would be hit by this Mansard roof or your roof line, actually come up to you where your equipment would sit up in this area?
No, no, the, the, we do have a plan that we'll submit that shows sideline study at 250.
Okay.
So right now, if you were looking on this as a straight, flat elevation, right now, the mechanical equipment is one foot above the top of that parapet, so at 250 feet, it loses it.
Right, okay.
And so, we feel comfortable that we're going to be able to screen that, and, you know, the top of that parapet is like 20, 21 feet, and the top of our roof, before insulation is 16 feet, so the top of that thing is 16 feet, so we'll have about four and a half feet there of parapet on the, on the high side.
Okay. I guess my only comment there would be then, if you come back after looking at it, and it does become higher up or more visible, that some form of screening goes up there that would match, and even that could be as simple as just adding a piece of coping that would attach some mechanical units that would look similar to what's going on around here, to almost make it mask or blind it, where it doesn't seem, where you don't see that piece of equipment driven up there, I think that's, that's simple enough and acceptable in, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, don't we, don't we normally let Pam Schultz do this, don't you, we should maybe coordinate with her so we, he doesn't get conflicting, conflicting ideas, if she says okay, and then you say, well, maybe we ought to do this, that, I think we ought to, well, what do you think, you think we ought to go through Pam, we're paying her.
Architectural experience and not just the other four of us just winging it?
Yeah, I hate to have us, have us give conflicting, conflicting comments when she's paid to do this.
It'd probably be good to...
We can call her, you know, you can call her and...
Yeah.
I got the phone number.
I put out of her comments, so I think we're...
Yeah.
I didn't see that it was outside of...
To coordinate with her and then tell them exactly how we should do things.
It sounds like, yeah, this is a preliminary, or preliminary approval you're looking for, so there's still some massaging of the architect and the site itself, but, you know, you guys got anything? Was there comments on the trash enclosure besides just the look of it, was it, was the location was okay, or...
Needed to have a double gate or a panel statement.
This wasn't the one, there was one of them, one of these, didn't even...
One on 82.
Yeah, that's right, okay, forget that. So, it sounds like there's, you know, we're definitely on the right track, I think there's definitely some things that, you know, people need to look into, a couple of things that we just double-check. The plan in general, I think, seems, seems good, the building's looking good. I encourage you to talk some about the line drive, I think that, that's a big deal to me, at least. Any other thoughts you guys have, or anybody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval, I don't think we have any exceptions or anything that we need to do for a preliminary approval.
I'd second that motion.
Any other discussion? Mr. Prince?
I think I heard the, the chairman, the motion included the comments from the consultants and staff.
Yes, yes, correct.
Yeah, right.
That's include the comments. All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Close? All right, I would appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for your time.
I have a quick question. Is the Golden Corral really unusual? Is it on the side?
It is decided for, for this user, for this client, it's much larger than any store they would do, and it's pretty old, but, I mean, this thing, I think it was one of the first, it's going in the shopping center, so to rehab that, to kind of get it back up, we've almost gutted the entire thing, verified, we didn't, we didn't do a walkthrough or verify the structure, but just based on age, and the size, it really comes down to the size. Now, they could, they could lease it to something else, or, you know, another sit-down restaurant or something, but they're trying to...
Any comment, it's, it's pretty big, I mean, it's, 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 it's a good spot.
It's fully sprinkled, it's fully alarmed.
Really? Because, yeah, it's a good place for a buffet, if it's not Golden Corral, but it's, makes, you know, it's the time that anybody wants to get a, start doing a buffet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It needs work, but it has potential.
Next is 1011 East Aurora Road. I know you've been here before, just for the record, can you hear your name?
Name is Anne Borbo, I'll ask her.
All right, so since the last time you were here, you, the new plan, actually, there's a new plan everybody's got in front of them, I think most of the changes you prepared to come around had to do with the roof line, this is, go ahead, why don't you give a little change and speak.
We've been working with Pam, architectural changes, and the roof line, she thought that it was much the building, this big building, it was putting 1,000 square feet of issue on, with the Mansard style. We've actually changed it since we gave the, but it's similar to that, so we've been back and forth, so she, she sent us a sketch of this, and I have some extra copies here for us to study. Yeah, yeah.
I was going to...
Yeah, we've been back and forth. I have a copy of her sketches, too, so.
Yeah, made a little, a little more roof. This is in historic district, all right, it's important.
Yes, her mark, she said, and we, I talked to her, and she suggested that we raise the Mansard roof up to match the front, the line of this current style, the arching up style, some processes according to the state, and with more than that, we can...
That was a nice, nice change from, from our, that started going here, and landing here, that was, so I agree, I think that's nice, that ties in a lot nicer, makes it a little more impactful, I'll build it.
This addition is more in the back of, I'm not trying to, and I'm interested in that with that. Well, because I'm gonna have, I don't want, I'm gonna have one, two of these, and that's one that I would like to be able to get to the roof without this vertical foundation that's, that's, I might have, I might have, like, I don't understand, but that would be the only, and I have two, I've got it.
I mean, I guess, like you said, so we've got this newer plan in front of us that clearly we want, we want to, in a minimum, make, continue on taking a look at these and get back to us, but I guess we need to know, you know, at least a couple of, I think I like this new plan better. That's kind of what I was expecting to see. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's kind of what I was expecting the changes to be. You had said just the previous plan. Haven't heard from the other guys, but, I mean, I guess, we need to know what you're proposing. If we can, we can only approve one thing.
Yeah, if you can approve this lot room, I would, from the addition that I have to go through this, I have no choice, but I prefer that lot room is just very hard to serve, it's very, it's a hard time finding somebody to do that.
Do you just go on the inside and be on the ceiling on the inside of the structure here, is that my question? And then that would be better from a maintenance standpoint, I think.
They're still gonna quit, but this twenty-foot, you hide, I don't think, it's very, very high. And I don't know if any, like, any AC guy can have, like, that mounting ladder to do the, to the roof to, and I need to bring this twice a year. But it's in the back, the front may still look the same. And I have big trees in the back, so I grew up, I started, I saw it, it's, it's been lucky. The buildings don't have a team looking for it, it's not, they used to...
I think Anne also, she was worried about, about mechanical use, it's a flat roof, but we, I think the last time we showed it, like, it was sloped, so the roof was actually sloped so that there was, like, three feet of space in a parapet for the mechanical equipment. She said that she wasn't sure about how, she wasn't, like, good at work with roofs, so she didn't know how that would work, but it did hide from the mechanical equipment. She didn't see all of that.
I think it would look a little, in my opinion, I think, making that reflect there, kind of transitioning from what you have to go flat, I think, a little bit odd, and I think you would definitely see the mechanical equipment from there. If you were to take off this piece of the roof right here and make, and just have this be flat and just maybe have this piece turn the corner right there, you're still going to see the mechanical equipment up there. And I, my opinion, I think carrying it all the way around is the best way to go. I think it looks, it ties to the entire building around. If this was flat back here, having a different discussion, it might be, I might be open to something, but I think carrying this around the whole way needs to occur. And I think there's some other options in terms of potential mechanical equipment. But that's my opinion here.
I'd like the building to look like it was all done at one time. I don't want it to look like, well, it was a nice building that had the dish to put on. Yeah, and I'm sure it will look nice, but I want, I prefer it's something that, you know, if you were from out of town, it was time, you drove by the first time, you looked at it, you would say, clearly, that's the original building, that's where they had the problems.
That's my neighbor, he sees it, that's right in the back of it, you know, I just looked at the picture yesterday, so it's, it's gonna look, you know, something like that, so, this guy has the whole, the whole, the whole house, and it's that roof.
That's your chairman, that's one of the original buildings, and we tried to shy away from that, that style where you can see mechanical equipment.
That's even the front of it, not the back of the building.
Right, I understand.
I think the concern with the back of the building, there's still a roof factor, so the back of that building is trees and residential there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna put, like, you guys want me to put a lot of trees, and I'm gonna add a lot of trees in the back of it, because the color might, might, the downstairs there, so it's gonna be a good street, cover everything.
All right, well, before we totally beat this issue, is, are there other issues? Did you have more comments besides this, on this plan? We'll come back. I'd like to come back to that, to see if there's any other things and kind of work those out and come back to this if you guys are okay.
Sure, I can go over my memo from August seventh. The first item is just a remaining continuous item, and Mr. Rodick and I spoke, and that particular user will be here in September to the plan revision for conditional zones.
That's correct, yeah, we'll have an application for next month's meeting.
Which is, honestly, I mean, I hate to call it a formality, but it's bringing it legal within the code because they moved in without one, but it is a condition permitted use and there's no issue that I'm aware of with that particular use. We just need to make it, get it on the record and approved. And then, with regard to my next comment, really kind of relates to the board of zoning appeals, and that's the twenty-foot setback off of eighty-two right away for the parking, ten foot's being proposed. Now, I will say that you've added the fence to mirror the Gordon Food Service, which is nice, and I do believe that's on the board of zoning appeals agenda coming up, I think, in the next two days.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I do think that that fence line and carrying it down is a nice addition, so we'll see what the outcome of that is with the board of zoning appeals. I spoke to Mr. Gelati about the stormwater management. He feels that the ponds for, the pond for this development was likely sized to accommodate full build-out, even this addition. I'm not sure if you want documentation.
Yeah, we can research that, building department-wise, but I think it's pretty clear that the detention pond is already in place for this particular parcel, so.
And the water is pending to it, and that, yeah, and that there's supplies, all right, it's right behind.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's likely fine, it's just, you know, my opinion is we just want to make sure that it can accommodate the additional stormwater. It's probably fine. The, with regard to the dumpster, as we had just mentioned, the back of this building really isn't kind of a back, it's a front as well, because it fronts on, it's pretty much frontage almost on every side of this with a roadway. And so, the dumpster has been a topic of discussion, and this round now is shown to be constructed of brick to match a building, which is good. And I just commented that the back of it should have, be heavily screened with landscaping. There are a couple of our devices shown on the, on the plan that I looked at. It sounds like maybe there's some revised screening that was shown on the new set of plans, which is good, and I can look at that, if the commission's okay with that administratively. Just again, because I think that should be a heavily screened area because of the proximity to the public roadway. And then, the landscape mounds in the front yard, I mentioned the fence to match Gordon Food Service, and then there's a retaining wall. I do think, this is more the engineer's issue, but I think some sort of calculation or detail about that retaining wall, maybe a section for that retaining wall be provided.
Yeah, we would typically want to see a section, and if the total height of the wall from the bottom of the footer to the top of the wall is forty-eight inches or more, it would have to be a detailed design stamped by an engineer, so.
And then, just some comment about the type of landscape species, which I'm sure you probably picked up in your recent middle. And then, that rear roof structure we've talked about, and I've talked to Ms. Schultz about that as well, and I think she's fairly, I guess, adamant in her position that it, you know, we want to be able to screen the equipment and make it sort of a continuous roof line around, so I guess that's a discussion for the commission to continue to have. I did recommend approval, final plan approval, subject to a final administrative review of the few outstanding comments, and of course, that's subject to the board of zoning appeals approving the setback rooms.
Thank you. That's true.
Nothing.
Nothing else, Chairman? Mr. Bell?
The concern over that new demising wall, they're gonna be fire separation all the way to the roof.
Yeah, it will be...
So, you don't plan on sprinkling in the building if you do enough separation, compartmentize it, so that'll be a fire-separated wall?
All right, do you guys have any thoughts on any of those comments before we go back to the outside?
Are we on the roof again or not?
We go back to the roof.
We're back to the...
Anything else before we go back?
No, no.
Okay, then go back to the roof.
Well, yeah, I guess if we're gonna do final plan approval, this is subject to administrative approval, but what if you can't get along with our design review person? You want a flat roof, she wants a mansard roof, and I think we tend to go along with her. Now, where are we? We've already, how do you do that?
I guess, you know, informally, I like to see this, the new ones being shown with the extension all the way.
Right.
Continuous height. Mr. Warner, who's already said, he likes to see that. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on it, but I think it's the right thing to do. I think if we kind of get a consensus, we need you to make a decision, what you're proposing. Are you proposing flat or are you proposing ridges? Does that may decide?
I'm proposing whatever you guys get out of proof.
You have to propose something. We've got this on paper here, so I'm assuming you're willing to propose this. This is what I would like to see, this is what Scott would like to see. I'll let you, the rest of you guys.
We all want to see, yeah.
I like, I like Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have another additional comment based on this being a fire wall. You're probably gonna want to study that because I believe that wall will actually need to come up and evolve for a complete fire separation between these two buildings. So, you would actually, we'd probably see this peaking up, and this roof probably will hide that based on how it sits, but that's something you might want to study, the wall will look into, how far that's actually going to need to go up and evolve between these two to create a true fire separation between the two buildings without the fire.
That was a service.
So, that will change the look of it a little bit, which I see, no, I have no issue, but just wanted to bring that up, that there's gonna be some problem, probably a protrusion up in this area for a true separation between the two buildings.
Is that the lot group?
It would be, it would be with the pitch roof, you're gonna see some form of line coming up, so just, I would recommend studying what that wall truly does need to be, what the height of going to be above there, because that will change the back of this a little bit. Again, I don't, I don't have no real major issue or concern, it's gonna have to be fire separated, but with this roof pitching back, this wall's probably going to need to extend up, and it might, because this does sit further back than this plane, chances are it may be behind this mansard roof, so you may, you may not see that, but just something you'll want to keep in mind and actually study.
I would like to see this, if this is proposed, then I would support that. If it's not, I don't think that would...
As I said, that's what they're proposing, that's the proposal, so compared to have that, if you take that, that's gonna be better for the proposal.
I do, I understand. All right, is there any other thoughts or comments or questions you guys have? Like to take a stab at?
I think you can do it, but you'd say, subject to that particular plan that we're looking at right now, the latest one with the mansard roof. I think that was a big issue, and I, maybe you make the motion, you're good at that.
It's not stated six-twenty-four, so I think somehow signify that.
Mark, it is exhibit A to the applicant's middle, you're approving it subject to that.
So, down to just, I think, but that, because we did this, like, one foot and four feet, like, to separate, so kind of with, like, just one straight line, because this is like the thing, if I apply it, then I'd be a little bit, I would not have had it like a straight line.
I don't know if I'm understanding.
I don't, but I thought...
The building, the print changed.
Yeah, because we did this, you know, like...
The print jogged out.
Yeah, instead of that, one foot and just one straight line, if I connect with the whole roof, straight.
We jogged it a foot.
Yeah, we did this, because this is supposed to be flat roof, like, if you don't mind, we're just gonna go one flat line all the way back.
So, would you pull this piece, would you pull it this way or would you pull it, push it, would you push this piece back?
No, this, this one, this is the existing one, so we're just gonna go one flat line, straight line.
I have no problem, I, uh...
It would look, it would look better with the roof.
I just don't want that to be too long of an elevation.
With this, the original draw, it was straight line, a true external pitch, and that was the draw. Yeah, it was straight line, and we did this pitch in order to, like, to separate it to, this is the plan that we approved two years ago. Yeah, so I'm just gonna, practically, I don't know, everything has to be good.
I would support, it's gonna be on the outside. It would make this detail a lot cleaner and easier from a construction standpoint, and I don't, it's probably, I have no, I have no issue with that, as long as it's pitched, I would say that if this is all the way around and it just, it is pitched, I have no problem.
I would say, for this point, we, are you, we need to go back to...
No.
It's getting weird because we got so many, that's what I'm thinking, you say this is the plan, it's subject to review. If you go, if you can go over the roof stuff, make sure she's good with everything, because she hasn't seen this latest plan, and discuss with her, kicking this out a foot to make it straight, as long as she's okay with it, I would be okay with that. You guys would be okay with her or that?
Right, as long as she goes along with it.
So, as of right now, we'll leave it at exhibit A, but she has the ability to, a little tail like that, it's okay. Make sure you bring it up with her and get her an updated plan. All right, so I'd like to make a motion for final plan approval with administrative review of the outstanding comments that you received from the reviewers, landscape, landscaping to be reviewed, administrative review, the BZR approvals that you're receiving, and final architectural review with the city's design consultant. Is there a second? A second?
Couldn't have said it any better.
All right, all right. All right, any more comments on that, guys? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's tricky. He's been at this for years. What was another tough one?
Should we sign this one? I'm gonna write that on here.
All right, well, we're getting organized, if you guys want to get set up.
I'm gonna let the people who know what they're doing sit down and do their...
While they're getting set up, does anybody need a cabinet room? I didn't leave my cell, I was just offering...
Oh, this is new stuff?
This is no, this is just a presentation that the CEO wants.
We don't have this.
You can allow the people to know what they're doing, sit down and do their part.
While they're getting set up, does anybody need a cabinet or anything?
I'm not as old as you are, so I'm not...
I didn't leave my cell, I was just offering.
Oh, this is new stuff.
This is no, this is just a presentation that the CEO wanted.
We don't have this.
It's not part of the official trans...
Our last fans made us, 8183 Goldenland Boulevard. If you guys are ready to go, I'll introduce your team, so they'll soon be good, and thanks for your reaction.
Thank you to some chairman members of the commission, my name is Majid Makhrouk, I'm a partner with the law firm attorney Dr. Greenberger, and legal counsel for the project, land use is only counsel for the project. With you tonight are a number of people, number one is Max Kudanik, who is the CEO and President of Optima Dermatology. He's actually on the phone, he has a newborn and couldn't be with us today, but he asked to quickly address the commission, so we're gonna give him a, I spoke with the chairman to give him an opportunity quickly. He prepared a presentation about who they are and what they do and the project, he wanted to quickly update the commission on that. And then we'll be hearing from Mitchell Harvey, who is with Stonefield Engineering, and will be answering any questions that you have. We also have Jason Hunt with us with Abbott Studios, and also we have Mike Sullivan with Allrick USA, and Scott from you with Optima Dermatology, is who we have with us. We'll start very quickly with Max, and I warned him to be very quick, you know, this is the planning commission, you know, you're looking at the plans, but he wanted to quickly talk to you, thank you, and just walk you quickly through the presentation that he has prepared, and I'll turn it over to Max. Max, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, thank you so much for the time tonight, I really apologize for not being there first, this is a very important opportunity, I think, for us to serve your residents, and it's very important to me, and I want you to know that not being there first, I really regret that, and of my life, I just want to thank you for allowing me to just use a few minutes. Very quickly, I'm gonna spend 30 seconds on each slide, just walking you through what the information, I started with you, just to assess who we are and what we do, and incorporate what the space is gonna be used for. So really quickly, we do a lot of things, the premise, we're focused on treating skin cancer. And on Slide 2 of the presentation, that I showed, where you can see that skin cancer is by far the most common type of cancer in the United States, there's 7 million cases of cancer in the US, high, nearly in a threshold of about 5 and 1/2 million is skin cancer. And it's also not only the most common type of cancer, but also the fastest growing type of cancer. Melanoma's grown by 110% over the last two decades. On Slide 3, despite cancer being so common and fast flowing, you have to wait longer to see a dermatologist than any other kind of doctor, and that's because there's very few dermatologists in the country, only about 300 per year that come out of residency, more than that retire. And then on Slide 4, you'll see that in Ohio, you have to wait longer than the rest of the country to see a dermatologist. I have a lot of family in Cleveland, I live in New Hampshire, most new dermatologists that come out of school prefer to go to Miami, and San Francisco, and New York, and other places like that, rather than where I live and where you live. So access to dermatology in the state of Ohio, although it's already worse than the rest of the country, is only getting worse over time. And then on Slide 5, you can see that although we have to wait a long time to see a dermatologist, that turns out not to be a good idea, in as little as 60 days, melanoma could go from a 99% of survival rate meaning if I see a spot and I know that I get that diagnosed today, that that's melanoma right away, I'm gonna live. In as little as 60 days, your survival rate goes down to 65%, and another 60 days, it can go down to over 25%. And on the right side, page 5, page 5, it just tells you that primary care doctors, urgent care doctors, misdiagnose dermatological issues about half the time. So if you have a spot and you don't know what it is, it's really important to see dermatology, about that, see it quickly. We specifically targeted Macedonia, because there is no care available, the type of care that we provide, and the level of care we provide outside of Cleveland, if we wanted to be able to provide convenient access to Macedonia, but also to folks in Akron, and it can't, and be a more convenient location, so we're certainly gonna provide great access to Europe, but also be a regional draw for other areas. On Slide 6, this just tells you all the different things we do, so primarily, it's general dermatology focused on cancer. We also treat most surgeries, so that's basically a special way of cutting out cancer, to make 100% sure you got all the cancer out. How we, we obviously do pathology, and there's some cancer, we also do clinical trials. So there's three primary areas of the building that we'll show you. One area on the bottom floor is where we'll provide general dermatology and cosmetic services. So that is, of course, you know, a spot that's cancerous, it's also, we don't want to maintain our usefulness, and so we have specialized doctors that just do cosmetics, that's things like botox, and fillers, special laser treatments, and all the things that we would want to keep us feeling and looking younger. And then in addition, on the other side of the bottom floor, we have most surgery suites, that setup is basically a little surgery center, where we're gonna be cutting out skin cancer. And then on the third, on the second floor, we have clinical trials. And what that is, is that if someone has a dermatological condition, has not been able to be treated well, arrest them. Our patients, but also other dermatologists, will send us patients that say they have a condition they had for 10 years, they haven't been able to treat it, and then we work, we be our partnering with drug development companies to come up with new drugs to help treat those patients that don't have another solution for their condition. And that's what happens on that second floor of the building. And each of these are designated areas depending on the type of service. And then lastly, in the back, there's just a lot of photographs that show the kinds of cancers that we treat, you know, before and after photos, and it's really important, I guess, to the conclusion, to have these things identified as early as possible, so that we can cut them out quickly before they get worse. But we do all kinds of skin cancer repairs right in our office, and it's dramatically more affordable for patients than if they went to a hospital, where these types of procedures and surgeries would be about 15 times more expensive. So for us to repair some skin cancer costs about $1,000, if they went to a hospital, it would probably be on about $15,000, so it's way more affordable for patients as well, and we think that's really important. So that's, I hope I didn't take too much time, but I'm really grateful for you allowing me to just allow you to explain what we're doing in the building.
Oh, we appreciate it, thank you.
I can keep you on if you want to listen, or if you can hang up, whatever you prefer.
I told you, if you don't mind, I apologize for being here, so I don't want to disrupt the games of the game. If there's any other questions that come, are there any questions at all relating to Optima Dermatology, or anything I shared that I'd like to answer?
Doesn't look like it right now, looks like we're okay.
Thank you so much, I'll just be on being here, thank you.
Commissioner, my name is Mitchell Harvey, Stonefield Engineering. So tonight, we are seeking a site plan approval for the proposed Two-Side Medical Office, located just to the south of the Chipotle, and to the north of the Culvers, out in front of the Lowes. To kind of talk a little bit about the site plan that we came up here, is we really wanted to utilize the cross-access point here to the north, as well as the lines drives up to the Lowes, or to the west. So what we did is locate the building, given the required setbacks, we parked around it. We have 72 parking spaces across the site, which really had the minimal number that works for Optima operation, but they, they put a few employees, and they expect a lot of patients coming, so they really need this amount of parking spaces to function efficiently. One thing I'd also like to point out is, we are proposing this five-foot sidewalk connecting the Culvers and the Culvert, and that will break people up to the sidewalk across Goldenland here. So it's kind of film in this, this missing puzzle piece, if you will, this, this big parcel. As far as landscaping goes, we are proposing over 33 new trees across seven different species. We designed the landscaping, planned to meet some of the surrounding developments, as well as plan well with the architectural plans prepared by Jason, and really enhance the building, and just sort of make this, this site look good. So with that, I'm gonna go over to Jason to assess the architecture, so have an example of the site plan, some questions to you guys.
Sure, yes, this, I think everybody's got plans, or we're involved, we've used a little topic, first of all, I've sort of been sitting up really, really working with Pam, she's a collaborator, we've gained a lot of progress in time from the initial design. We learned quite a bit about western reserve, and also this development, and the styling, and everything. So I feel like we will always, as far as complimenting the design of the rest of the center, with regards to material, detailing the materials, we continually add, a lot of people with relief, including the brickwork, and pop-outs, and make some high laster designs, a lot of, a lot of growth and development apart as far as how much weight, or how much different types of material, or how much wood can be brought in. So this, this plan, first, it shows where this building is situated, to the main properties of the building. It's quite a bit distant between the two, and the power itself is a detail that came from an inspiration of a building like this, with a western reserve style building, and having really, really beautiful white power, we wanted to incorporate that design in the building. So we're going to set up, we, we'll see the details, and the brickwork, the white brickwork with that, the manseur roofs, the power itself, we've revised and added a little bit more, larger or thicker canopies at the front, to mimic more western reserve styling. The windows on the sides and the front, we've revised those to a lot more residential style, or western reserve style, repetition of the windows, and where there are areas where we couldn't put windows, we continued the repetition by putting kind of a relief, brick and fill pattern, to make it look like maybe there was a window there at one time, and it was built in. We've also carried that same theme onto the other side of the building, this is, this is, we're entering from the back corner, looking back up to, that last view is up, looking that way, this is looking back the other way, so you can see a little bit of the back of the building, where we brought the breakup, almost two stories, we've matched the style of white paneling that Culvers used.
This is the Chipotle side?
This would be the back of the Chipotle side, correct.
Okay.
We use white doors, probably, right now, we just designed this black panel, steel doors, but I believe that if a six-panel, some sort of a panel or detailed door, it would be more desirable, that's something that we talked about, doing it well. We brought canopy from the back of the building as well to break up. So one of the things that Pam commented on was breaking up the repetition, or breaking up the length, and... So that would be the point of the vertical pilaster detailing, we've got, we've added some solder coursing, three different levels, you have horizontal mending, and the back, we've highlighted the brick, we've opened that up with canopy as well. Part of the reason of the height here is because the mechanical equipment was all hidden behind this bracket here. But here, there's no mechanical working above the, to the bonus of the level, so that's what we've done, to keep the height of the building out as low as possible. And this installation would be just a career from the Lowes parking lot. Again, we will see more clearly, the brick detailing, solder coursing, pilasters, this is another area where just to break up this light area, we created one of those indoor window areas. Coming around to this side, Pam had commented on the style of this window. These, this, this height, this shape, this style, these dimensions of this window are really kind of important. This is where the patient cares, the patient rooms, the exam rooms are, and the window height is high enough so that the patients can change, it's dermatology, they'll be uncoated during exams, and so this gives them privacy, keeps the windows up high enough so that there's natural light, and makes the room a little bit more enjoyable to be in, but also gives them the privacy. Should Pam would like more traditional windows, what we're trying to do is, is again, empty the below to make it look like at one time, the properties were hollow windows, but functionally, they've been modified to be more usable for this, for this business. It came from the mansard roofs, both the back and on this upper level, to really minimize the amount of white siding, and also to complement the mansard roofs, I mean, most of the, most of the building was in this development, half-mansard style roofs, so if you wanted to, if you wanted to spin in that way as well, I'm gonna work that last view, it's here. The opulent is a, it's actually an important part of this building's design, because this isn't the only, this isn't the only center that they're building, and just like you can identify McDonald's or Lowe's, and immediately, just by looking at the building, you don't need to see the signage, this is a trademark that we want to try to embrace, and try to make people, some kind of a hint that it's unique, and if you meet Optima, then we want people to recognize that that's an Optima, no matter what the exterior finishes are, the exterior styling is, that teaches community, but this opulent is, that's one more, of course, identifiable feature in the design that we'll try to hold on to.
Jason, do you mind if I have just completely...
Please, please. And just to let you know, this is a new brand, Optima, just launched. We are trying to give you your first location here, for this $15, $15 motion. This design was concepted by, the design gave us the allocation, they brought that to Allrick USA, where a version of the safety shelter out of Detroit, also has a design team, so a lot of design teams have touched this building. It is a national brand, full of wow. It was really hard, the doctors are also very rare, the ones that perform these roof surgeries, the board of directors and the doctors have full control of the final design approval and such, so that's where it's been a little...
approval and such, so that's where it's, it's been a little bit involved in mutual, um, but we're, you know, we're building one of these centers in all major cities. We have this one in Cleveland, we have one in Columbus, and we're looking for a location in Cincinnati. You guys, who do you think first? And kind of where we should pressure or take it down fast is to be able to break ground before winter, so that I can easily, the mountain should be still properly in order for this one, first location.
So I want to kind of look at the materials too, and I brought some samples, uh, some brick sample, it really doesn't match exactly to any other buildings there, which is probably been a nice, you know, copy exactly out of somebody else, but this really does fit in well with, with the other, with the other buildings, you know, there's, uh, a mixed, um, pattern of a little bit lighter color and some others, others. The white areas we use cement for, um, probably a panel, a larger piece of plastic panel, uh, and filaments, uh, that conceals, you know, it's a nice little coffee table, so a lot of pieces of, uh, sort of white finish on it, uh, the, the, uh, canopies themselves could be aluminum or that stuff, some sort of break metal, something with some weight to it, some strength, it doesn't, you can't caper or look here, anything like that, but, uh, and then obviously, uh, the mansard, uh, I'm being asked, it's probably charcoal or dark, something to complement, rather than anything else.
All right, so that, is it for you too far? Scott, did you want to?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to disclose that, uh, Mr. McCluf and I have worked together on a prior project for the company that I currently work for, so just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
And I honestly did not know that he was on the board, so like, so the first night, so I, I would have disposed of, I came in and I just.
All right, well, appreciate the presentation, we'll, we'll get to some of our comments, we'll, I'm sure we've got some questions, uh, all the viewers, the state or information from this branch, if you'd like to, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my report dated August eighth. Um, some of these, these items, so the first couple items here are active items that are being requested for variances, um, so I think they're on in two days at the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, so those are items that, again, will be heard by the BZA for those requested exceptions. And then the third item, H2A2 of the crossings criteria, um, speaks to parking lot, parking lot aisle landscaping, and so there are, um, the, there are a couple of drive aisles that terminate near the proposed ground sign, that do need to have some landscape treatment added to those, fairly minor, but it can be accomplished. The dumpster enclosure, provide, item number four, the dumpster enclosure provides a gate with steel wire and two-inch mesh for screening, I think that, that needs to be eliminated. Our gate made of some sort of solid material, like vinyl or some sort of sear, something that's more decorative in nature, needs to be added rather than the mesh screening. I know, um, the city engineer commented on the location of the dumpster, it's a highly visible area, although I'm, I'm not sure where else it could go on the site, the whole site's highly visible.
Pretty frontage.
Yeah, I mean, whether you want it on the new access road, on Route Eight, or if you want it.
Yeah, we tried to tuck it in that corner up there.
I feel like that's the, I mean, I just feel like that's probably the best spot because of all the visibility.
It may be, yeah.
Yeah.
It may be the least evil.
Yeah, it's the lesser of all evils, I feel like, yeah. And I think just screening appropriately and.
There's up against the building, is there Chipotles up against the building?
Yeah, it looks like there's up here.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they had something on that one already, but.
Yeah, Chipotle and Culver, they've kind of hidden their dumpsters as best they can, they're, they're not really eyesore, so I think with the screening, as I say, Brian, that maybe that location.
I mean, I'm not sure where else you put it.
I don't know where better location either.
Yeah, that routing frontage is visible and I'd hate to put it on the new access.
We're not starting on the new access road and, and the, uh, route eight is pretty tight there.
Yeah, so I think just close attention to the detail of screening it and, um, as we go through plan review, I think location probably is, is the best that we can get. Um, and then I just noted some, an item five, some deviations from the section M of the crossings criteria, just on landscape material, and I note those, that's a pretty simple fix, uh, to the, I just encourage the designer to go through, just look at that to make the changes or anything. Um, regarding the site plan, um, the one thing that is missing off of that frontage in the new access, the routed access drive, that I didn't see was the fencing columns similar to Culver's, I think needs to mirror the other side of the road. I think that's the, really the gateway now, um, coming out of and seeing from Route Eight, and, uh, I think the administration, the current and previous, has done a really nice job making sure that those, that fencing and columns went place, so I, with lighting, I'd encourage the commission to continue that, that scheme.
Yeah, and Brian, and that fencing would be along the new access road and also along the State Route Eight frontage as well, to mirror Culver's and Chick-fil-A, right?
And that's, again, as the engineer pointed out, that is matching other, other sites that have done that as well. Um, off-street parking, uh, there is no issue, um, first time looking at this, there was a concern about parking, but, um, yeah, they found the twenty percent reduction and so made that look for their site, which is fine, um, so it sounds like they're at their bare minimum, which is code compliant, so there is no issue with parking. And again, because of the site, I mean, it's bound by, by roads, right? And so it's, it's hard not to have parking visible, you're going to have it visible, so I think they're doing as best they can to try to screen it and, you know, take the, take the eye away from it as much as possible. Um, so with that said though, there are, the, the next two items are also variance from Road Less as it relates to, um, some of the, uh, the setback requirements for the parking, so those are being requested at the Board of Zoning Appeals as well. And then, uh, what electrics plan, um, the light levels, um, have been addressed with the exceedance at the main entrance, um, just the commission should opine on whether the twenty-two-foot tall shoebox, shoebox style light's appropriate, I know it's used in other applications, so just wanted to get, make sure you're, you understand, the reason I bring it up is because this use is different than a regular use in the plaza, in the complex. This is more of an office user as opposed to retail restaurant, um, so just something to consider. And then, uh, really the biggest, um, then the biggest item is going to get down to the architecture, and I understand the position regarding the architecture. I pointed out, um, five main points, um, about the architecture. My opinion, the building is out of scale and character with the other buildings in the crossings, um, the massing of the main elevation is not connected with the rest of the building elevations, um, I do think that gables are needed similar to Best Buy or Great Escape, and then, uh, that recess window or Oculus window, um, does not match western reserve architecture, and there's no lengthened bars on the windows, which is something that the commission typically does require. Um, so I just thought that that needs to be looked at and discussed further with the commission, the city's design consultant. Regarding signage, I go through an exhaustive, um, valuation of how much signage is permissible, and at the end of the day, a lot of signage is being proposed, a little bit more than what's permitted, so a variance would be required from that, um, from what's being proposed, about almost a hundred and thirty square feet, um, is an exceedance of what's permitted, so that would be, need to be something that would be, um, provided by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Overall, I think that the plan can be approved, the preliminary plan and layout and such, the site plan, I think is thoughtful to the site, I mean, again, it's not the easiest site to plan around because of all the, um, visibility, um, so I do think preliminary plan approval is, um, recommended, but I, I think the architecture is probably the most significant item we'll need to speak through, aside from the, the variances that will have to occur to effectuate the plan this proposed.
Thank you. Just a quick question, I, I've got, I'm looking at the BZA agenda for Wednesday, is signage one of the ones that you're asking for? Is that on there, on the agenda? Okay, it is, okay. Okay, well, I don't know if we, maybe we want to get all their input and we can talk about it.
And just a, a point I made, you know, obviously, Mr. France alluded to this in the sense of, you know, that there are other retail uses and, you know, the, which get to have repeat customers that come to them all the time, so they know where Lowe's is, they know where McDonald's is. The kind of user that's coming to the site is coming for treatment and coming from different locations, so we do, you know, the, the kind of signage, the kind of identification of the building being for the type of user, because otherwise we could even create confusion in traffic, people look, you don't want to be, people looking for the building inside the shopping center, trying to find where it is, uh, you know, the, that, that is something that we, you know, you want it, uh, you want it there. It's, it's not a use where you get your customers, they're driving by, you know, the signage is not for somebody driving off the street, oh, I'm going to go get my dermatology right now, it's more for the people who have made the appointment coming in, uh, to, to be able to, to find the site readily. With respect to the crossing criteria, I think that this is an issue that's been in discussion with the law director, and I think he determined that they were not, uh, city requirements, those were private, uh, requirements of the owner and the developer. I have not been involved in, in that part of it, but I know that the developer has been in discussion with the, with the owners, and I think there's been verbal approval, they're, they're waiting to get the written approval, but there has been, in terms of the variations from the crossing criteria, my understanding have been at least verbally blessed, uh, by the owner, not to me personally, I'm reporting what, what occurred.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, yeah, the signs are not on the Board of Appeals meeting for, for this month, that would end up being at a future time. And the, and as far as the off-street parking goes, the, um, there, there's two different restrictions, and there are still variances required from our code, although our code and the criteria have two different standards, so would, it still would be necessary to come before the Board of Appeals on Wednesday for that appeal from our code, but you'll also need to go to the, uh, the owner, I guess it'd be DeBarlo or the successors, to gain some approval and, and present that back to the, to the city.
We are, we are doing both, we're, we're before the BZA on, on Wednesday, and I think the discussion with the owner is ongoing, and that's, when I said the verbal, I think that's the discussion with the owner with respect to the crossing criteria, so that, both, both are happening. It's interesting to me, I think, I would like to double check, because I thought the, maybe, the application for the variances included the, the signage and the rationale for the signage, so I'm not sure if it somehow didn't make it on the agenda, but that's a discussion for a different board, we can follow up on it tomorrow by.
No problem. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Um, sorry, do you have anything else that you?
I had nothing more.
Joe?
Yeah, thanks Chairman, I'll just touch on the, uh, the main topics here on my memo. Um, we need, would need your, um, environmental, uh, clearances or wetland walkthrough letter, whatever you may have, uh, for the site to, uh, keep you in compliance with the Clean Water Act. Uh, Brian already touched on the decorative fence need for the south and east, uh, property lines, and then the last, uh, item would be storm water management. Uh, I don't know what you guys have in mind or proposed, or wasn't anything specifically shown on the plans, is underground storage, uh, the plan moving forward?
Yeah, that'll be an underground system, water quality.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. Uh, some of the other neighboring, uh, businesses there, uh, I believe also have underground storage, so that's all I have, Chairman.
Can I ask a quick clarification question on the fence, or the, um, wall? I noticed that Culver's is located within the light of way, uh, along the access drive, could we locate ours within that light of way as well with a similar setback of the third one?
I would think that the answer would be yes, because we would want to match, well, we want you guys to match what Culver's has done, we'd want a symmetrical, uniform look, so.
And I think that came up with Culver's and we.
Yes.
Granted that assumption.
I think, I think we did, it was part of the, um, part of the deal to build the road, so. That's all I had, thanks Chairman.
I don't know where to start. Well, uh, I guess you're going to build other facilities in Ohio, so you're going to be somewhat familiar or experts on the two thousand seventeen fire code, but, so this is a surgery center, so to speak, kind of like a hospital, so there's going to have to be a lot of plans and a lot of inspections. You could probably do reconstructive surgery, are there going to be any overnight facilities to house people? And then when you have issues, then it's, you're going to push that burden on to the fire department for a nine-one-one call to come and transfer that patient to an appropriate facility that can treat or house? So, you know, my brain is going down a different road than what the building's going to look like.
Yeah, the, uh, these actually do qualify, there's no medical gas involved, it was knocked out, um, they, this is all low man's legal, and it does not qualify as a surgery center, it's still a, a medical.
Well, hopefully that's not a gray area.
It's not.
Based on interpretation.
Yeah, I believe medical gas is qualified, right?
Well, I, I can't quote what all it may be, but yeah, it'll, it'll be scrutinized based on whatever the use group for the building is, because you're going to have waste, biological waste, you're going to have labs, uh, I don't know if you're going to do x-ray equipment, so, all of those may be open items that will apply, I'm sorry, sir.
We, they have a legal, uh, they've been looking into this, we can, we can.
My, this is not, I don't mean interrupt, I just wanted to confirm that you have all of our buildings are medical, uh, it's just an office building, it's not, uh, and there's no, the only reason that an ambulance would ever come to us is if somebody happened to walk in and had a heart attack in the lobby, just like if they walked into any other doctor's office, but there would never want to be anyone leaving our, there's no one staying overnight, and there's no one that would ever leave due to, it's never, it's never happened to us in the past where someone would leave as a result of the care that they received, and the test never happened before.
We've had dentists giving patients too much anesthetic, we've had to go get them.
Who issue a letter?
Yeah, yeah, so, so far, never happened in any of our facilities over the last twenty, thirty years that you've been open.
Just want to make sure that it's safe and meets what we need, meets the code.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, um, one thing I did notice, I, I didn't pick up to now here, um, there's a gino in here, but not on the elevation sheet, so if, if that is planned, a couple issues come to forefront, you'll need a variance for more square footage, but also you, um, the city doesn't allow two signs on the same building elevation, and so you'd have to get a variance for additional sign.
That, that's more than our workpiece, it's behind the class, it's more behind the vests, so usually those are considered from, sign, that's inside the, but actually, we don't.
Yeah, I, I think it's a sign, we can go, we can look at that in the code, but I think it's a sign.
The first thing I thought of was dust by, I think it was like the price tag, or something inside of the class, and I think we would, that's, that's, that's what was leading, it's going to be what my question was, is that part of the sign calculation, does it count to signs, and that's, that's affecting the.
Yeah, it wasn't part of the square footage calculation, um, it was called out in your actual elevation, it was just a little bit friendly, so I can.
We did not calculate that.
We're slightly wrong.
I guess Mr. France can look into it, but it may be something that, especially if you're going for variance. This may, I guess, in terms of square footage. But it may be something else for two things on one side, two signs.
Jigsaw questions just to confirm that beyond the class.
I guess, in light of some of the comments, do you guys have, do you guys have specific comments? Or do you want to look at it and talk about it?
I could ask some. Well, let me just ask. You say you have other offices. Do they all look kind of like this? Is this sort of your model?
For the, for the, Max is speaking to their former business, I believe. Yeah, the.
I can't hear you.
Prior elevations and renderings.
Mike, can you address that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. So we provide all these services within our practices. Some of them aren't, in our historical practices, they've not always been in the same building. So yeah, sometimes where they are in the same building and sometimes where they're split up in multiple different buildings because we've grown over time. Out for all of our new buildings, much more convenient to have them in one place. So that way, you know, if you're doing a clinical trial and the physician is seeing a patient and there's something interesting going on with the new ground, they will run upstairs. The doctor can just go run upstairs.
Well, let me, let me, let me interrupt you then. Is this building, the one where you're proposing, is this unique to Macedonia? Or where is one, where can we look at one online that's exactly like this? This is unique?
There will be, we're also building one right now in Columbus. And also building one in, in Ohio, in Warren.
But this particular, I'm getting to the design review again. The design, is this, this type of building sort of unique? And I see that our design person came up with gables and punchouts and built things like this. What did she call them? Yeah, yeah. But that wouldn't work with your building. And you need this tower, you have to have a tower on this, on your building that's unique to this? Your tower with the O in it?
Sure. The tower in Oculus, are the design features of this building. We are building the first top of location being adopted. This concept of saying, Ohio, this small building does not have a surgery center. Previously, there were no operating top of businesses, but all the services comply.
So the tower is sort of unique to Macedonia?
Tower's unique to Macedonia. And having with Pam, she sent us this as an inspiration from what we're working on. Well, our original building design was different and had a.
The one Pam sent you was a little difficult for you, is that, would that be?
This. Well, we did try to mimic this, this tower with our building. We raised it just a little bit so that, so that it sits, the bottom of the tower sits where the, kind of the roof line or ceiling line would be for the first floor. But other than that, it's essentially, proportionally.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Essentially the same, this is inspiration. The word is special, the board of directors, the doctors, the acting, the habits.
You see, that's more of the Western Reserve look that the Macedonia is pushing. And rather than yours, would be very unique to Macedonia and I guess, guess to Ohio, too. Yeah.
But we're trying to keep the big mass, the high building, the high sign. And where it's a really big point for them is this is, these doctors, this is a brand new cutting-edge technology of them being able to take the skin off, repair it from the inside for people with facial disintegration, soldiers, you know, cosmetic, so that it doesn't leave a permanent big scar. So it's modern, cutting-edge technology.
Well, that answered my question. Thank you.
I wanted to answer your question a little bit more is that at this location, even though the exterior elevations are different from the prototype, the interior, we tried to keep it the same.
Right.
So there are a lot of things that are driving the design based on keeping a prototypical interior design. And that way, if employees were to go from one, one building to another to change jobs, there'd be less of a line for, and everybody, you know, the processes can evolve a little bit better when there's that interior.
Thank you.
We also have an elevator in this building that, I'm sure you guys would know, with the second floor creates this, this high peak that we have to kind of blend in with the building. And so that elevator's in, it's in this tower. That's what, that's the only thing that drives the height of this tower.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the architectural review here. And I just see a massive, on a distance from your presentation. Well, it's a very sharp-looking building, I will give you that. I love the presentation talking about the services you provide, I think that's great. There's an unmet need. I just think there's a lot of very big concerns about the architectural details. The height of the building, there's nothing else around it, that's two stories. You guys made it very clear, this needs to be two stories. The Oculus, the indented window, does not meet Western Reserve design criteria. You made it very clear, that's a design function that you don't see wanting to give up. Gables, windows, the types of windows, the heights of the windows, the mountain bars. Part of the presentation said, back to the Oculus, it's a brain recognition. The example is given, like, if you drive by McDonald's, you know it's McDonald's by looking at the building. But in Macedonia with the Western Reserve style that we've developed here, we don't want that. We don't want you to be able to look at the building and say that's McDonald's, whether that's a Pizza Hut or something like that. And anybody jumping correct me if I'm wrong, the tower stands out. To me, that looks more like a billboard, because we're right on a highway, right on Route 8. We've got all this extra signage there. Like I said, I think the services are phenomenal you guys have provided. I'd love for that to be in our town, I'd be proud to have that in the town. I think the buildings that start building, I just think what you're trying to do is get us to offer so many exceptions, variances that we've historically as a commission have not allowed. IHOP won the blue roof, and blue roofs aren't allowed. So IHOP had to conform to the standards. I just think we'd be making a lot of exceptions in setting precedents. Am I off?
I don't know, have you talked to Peter? Peter's on here this evening.
No.
We were really, I don't know if you saw what we initially started with, with our concept. And I mean, we spent over a month going back and forth with her. And all of what we presented this evening was a recommendation. That's where we were trying to come up, that letter was issued to me on Friday. It was a lot different than our conversation.
I remember the original drawings, you had made a lot of changes. I just still think that there's a lot more to be done. It doesn't, like, that one example that you held up, I don't think, you know, I don't want to speak to you guys, but I don't get the feeling you guys were willing to make those concessions on the building to match more of that inspirational picture.
I think we are open, I think we're very challenged here. Culvers, I believe Culvers and Jopole, very, very small places. Lowe's, very big place behind us. When you're driving by Culvers and Jopole are both exactly what they build everywhere else. I see zero differences on the Culvers from what I see in Columbus, what I see in Cincinnati. And, you know, I think when we talk about the scale of, yeah, we're 15,000 square foot building on a much larger lot than both of those. If you compare it to Lowe's right behind us, and that's like, it's no different than the column of Lowe's. Hey, you've got a 40,000 square foot store, you've got a, you know, proportionally, Lowe's and Culvers look really small. So I think, in my design opinion, that we do kind of limit, because we're combining a very large building with much smaller buildings. We are very open to making changes to get towards this Western Reserve design. We just need, you know, we need some help here.
Mike, can I just add one thing as well? I just, I think I apologize, I apologize again for, I hope I'm not interrupting, but. We, so it's very important to us to provide you with a beautiful building that you're proud of. We want to be a great asset to the community. We want to save lives for people that live in the community. We want to cure cancer. And we want you to also enjoy driving by this building for everyone on the floor to be proud of it. So that's very important to us. If you, I think if the team there has a photo or pictures of our prototype buildings, just so you can see, our prototype building really looks nothing like this building at all. The building that we're building in Columbus and in Liberty, Ohio, and in Warren, which is the same as this here, they almost look nothing like this, honestly, because we completely changed the design to try and provide something that's in line with, something that we thought is Western Reserve and you would be proud of and we can be proud of. So we, we, we are basically, we do provide cutting-edge medicine and we're proud of that. We do like the building represent that, but that's not what's going on here. That we are trying to provide a Western Reserve looking building. It is though 15,000 square feet and the building, that's a little short, about 1,500 square feet. So we're about 10 times bigger than those buildings, that is, that is true. That is, you know, that is what we need to provide the services. As far as the design, again, we really, we want, we want to work very hard to accommodate you. And so we completely changed the design of the building from what our other buildings, our buildings are looking like. But I guess, you know, we do want, the windows, like, we do want patients to be able to, they're unclothed in the room. And so we, it is really nice to have that in the life. You can have exam rooms, that function is really helpful. If, you know, we could eliminate the windows completely, but that won't be as nice for the patients or for the physicians working down there. As far as the massing of the building, you know, we, we were trying really hard to create something that's very attractive and interesting, and then also have the elevator and have, you know, the tower nature to it, with all the other requirements. So I just want it built, we are trying very hard to accommodate something that everyone would be proud of.
I just want to say, I don't disagree with anything he said. I think those are all great services, I just, you have to have the size of the building, it looks out of place. I think the building's beautiful, it's sharp, it just don't think it fits. I'm appointed to this commission to reinforce these standards.
How about that picture, that one under your glasses? Where did you get that?
I'm not sure where this building is. I found the picture on the internet, this is West Bill Peck. Yeah, but I don't know what's sitting here.
Well, that's, that's kind of more like what I think we're thinking of, sort of. You can pass that around. I never saw that one before. I thought maybe Pam gave you that.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Have you, can you provide us with, I'm sure you did some massing models, right? When you were looking at massing on this site? Do you have those massing models you could provide us to see?
I think, specifically.
How this building masses appropriately on the property? You've looked at all the adjoining buildings, and so you've run some sort of massing models to show how it fits on the site. It'd be helpful to see the progression.
That would be the first page of our presentation, which is the building itself.
Yeah, that's a, you're trying to show how it fits in from an aerial view of this building. You're an artist rendition of it sitting on that site. I'm talking about, did you do massing models to see how it fits on the property compared to the other buildings? Looking at different ways to mass the building to fit on the site?
Making it not, I think, if I may.
Go ahead.
But I think what you're getting at is not having it be so, breaking up the massing a little bit by maybe having it shorter in some, in one area and having it kind of, almost like a tier effect, I think is kind of what you're saying.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Is that all vertical?
Yeah, I get where you're coming from, and especially from a programmatic standpoint, I can appreciate and understand how you need to tie your programmatic elements interior to your exterior. I.
Was there anything else you had to put on that question?
No, I just was curious. So no, you picked up on what I was looking for to understand that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one.
Okay.
I did have some questions. So in terms of, what is your fourth floor like? Because I just kind of been looking at this, and maybe getting a building section would help me understand a little bit better. Because it does seem like there's some areas that might be able to be scaled out a little bit. And I could be wrong, just having a better understanding of maybe what's going on in different areas. And then maybe if there, you know, if there is a way to, I'll let you answer the fourth question. Okay. Because I think in looking at this, just, I mean, when I look at the front elevation right here, it seems like there's a whole lot of space right there in between where the head of your windows are. And typically, I mean, looking in most of, you're going to go maybe a foot, two foot above. That just seems like there's a huge amount of space above there, above those window heads right there for what would be your second floor. And kind of the same thing even on the first floor, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong without having foreplmed, are there any programmatic elements on this portion right here? There are stairs all the way, but not all the way back. But these are examples, I would assume, along this side, correct?
One side could be over there.
Because I kind of think, and this is what my suggestions, Brian kind of asked him. I guess what I'm getting at is, is there any room to kind of pull some of this down a little bit? There's some areas to not make it, to help it kind of be a slower transition than just. And again, I understand where you're coming from, why it's only done, because you do, you do have two one-story buildings next to a two-story building. But possibly by taking it and not having, I mean, I would consider this, it had at least a story and a half. Especially considering that's where your two-story, I would assume, back here is. Looking at that and kind of trying to right-size some of the proportions of it a little bit better, I think might be beneficial.
There's a possibility of pulling it down some. We are screening.
With this wall right here?
Along the wall, right down the other side, yeah.
I wanted to wonder with this two-story building, because I, and I could be wrong again, but it's something we, we'd ask people to look into. But I was wondering if the units would go over here to that serve down and not be as visible. From, and allow you to possibly get this proportion of the building down and play a little bit more. Maybe they could go back here or sit back here somehow. Because I think from a visibility standpoint, just from standing here, I don't believe, and I could be wrong, and without having to do a study, I don't think you would see the equipment back here. I would agree with what Mr. Roberts said, I have some overall concerns with the front right here. I think the Oculus definitely does not fit into the style of architecture around here. I think taking what's done here and adding some additional detail to this might be a bad idea. And I kind of question whether this could even be brought down in scale again.
I could, I don't know, I wonder if I should have something, yes, I could be brought down some. My concern with matching this entirely.
No, I'm not saying match it entirely, no, no. I think there's some details and some plays that could, that could occur on this that would tie to the rest of the architecture and the center a little bit better.
So rather than breaking up this wall.
I think maybe we broke it up with smaller windows, have some additional detailing around it.
Probably, we probably have to do some sort of, something like that. Just making up with the side.
I actually think that's, that's pretty hard, regardless of it's to begin with.
That is, that's, you know, still for construction, but the, the, this more would be.
You probably want some of these, this was in our package. Somebody submitted this, I don't know who, these kind of things were, sort of breaking up the surface, that massive surface. I don't know who submitted this. She sent that in?
Yeah, and doing something like that, that is, around the Oculus, that is an app that we made to try to do some, Pam and I had a few more conversations about that. And I do kind of like the idea of bringing that out a little bit more, like, I'm going to kind of beat that. Oculus, try to think more about.
A little more Western Reserve, that's, that's sort of the thinking.
Yeah, and that is sort of where, I mean, so through this last month, we've been going back and forth with the same. Like, so we, we've been going up and down and around and adding windows. The only thing we asked for, I mean, that Oculus, it's important to this guy. I mean, it's really, really important.
That's in all your buildings, right, that Oculus?
That is the key, Brian asked.
That is the key, right aspect from the design infancy. Having a little larger tower, you know, having it stick up, being more of a feature point for, for the patients to look at. It, those are the two things we were stuck on. Other than that, we're like, you know, give us some direction. We'll, we'll go, we're just, we need to be fast. We just, what do you recommend is the best way to sit down and and kind of count this out. Cause I, you know, I feel we, we've submitted fifteen options. You know, we, we've just sort of ran circles providing these.
I'm curious, how does that Oculus impact your internal functionality?
It's designed, it's either branding, it's.
It's a branding issue. So, cause you mentioned states.
It's, it's not, it's a light, it was a style.
The Oculus is also, one of the things that just, uh, when he says branding for, for us for branding is, you know, we have a whole brand around layers of skin and layers of light. And so light can skid and so it allows light to shine through in a really cool way to the reception area. So it's a neat thing from, on the inside of the building, but, um.
Get the sky up and wind down.
But it's, it's not. It's, it's a, it's a nice internal feature also, but it's not, uh, the more important I guess is the, is probably the building, we need the number of square footage that we can show to be able to provide the service that we need. So, you know, that is, 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 is more for.
Are you referring to this as being the Oculus?
This.
Or this right here? That's what I would do. That is, well, and, and according to the floor plan, that doesn't filter down to the first floor. That, that actually goes to two exam rooms right there. So, uh, I would see that. I mean, especially, you know, you're, one of the prior comments about not having, uh, or making those windows on the side. And I, and I can understand and appreciate that, having those be, I'll call a better term a clear store windows, so that they're not getting in. I would see that as being, you, you would almost.
It is, it is there. And on a, on a single-story building, we have three prototype sizes. On a single-story building, the Oculus transfers down to the skyline. In the two-story building, we're using that window for, is that a series?
Is that going to shield the exam rooms from enough?
The windows, there's, there's the higher in that exam room.
Okay.
There's, there's the same elevation as the, um, the lower.
Okay. One of the other, um, and I completely understand when you have programmatic elements behind an area that you can't have windows in. Uh, one of the things I would have is on this side elevation that a butt's Chipotle, that extra side, uh, side elevation. I wonder if, um, these might be better served as being, and again, if the commission agrees or would allow, maybe these become spandrel windows. So you do have a, a low, um, gla- almost appears to be glass all along one side elevation as opposed to a couple of actual windows. And then you've got a couple of the, they were blocked in and then you continue with windows. So I wonder if these become a spandrel window system so that it still does give that appearance of an actual window on the other side that you do have.
So these, this, this bay here, whether you do, those that are, that are, for those, these things.
I, I mean, that's just my opinion.
I was thinking, I think we use that.
I, I believe that would be more consistent. That would be more consistent with, with this side elevation. I think on the other side where you do just only have the brick infills, I, I'm completely fine with that. I think that's consistent. There's no, there's no real, I, I, on a different plane there are, but there's no real windows in that area. So I think just when you're looking down here, it almost looks like something, just kind of took something away from there. So I think those becoming spandrel would be, would be a nice modification there. Um, I know you had mentioned the doors being white. Um, and I don't know if, if that's the intention to, okay, I would, I would recommend they could do it. Be, be painted the same color as the brick to, to not, they, they stick, I mean, if it were a piece of trim, trim being white's fine. And again, these are just my opinions. Um, I'll let the rest of the commission kind of weigh in on theirs as well. But I think having those be, uh, painted to match the brick color would be a little bit better. I think having, you know, it, it signifies even, you know, where you do have, I'll go to the other elevation where you do have the brick detail, you know, you still do have, uh, where you do have a door, you have, uh, I question whether you need even do the detailing. I think the soldier coursing above those doors, um, is a nice detail. I don't know if you need the, um, is that proposed to all be ADAC trim or some kind of like a fine on or something like?
It is, yeah.
I would wonder if maybe you just do the, the brick detailing above there similar to what we've done on some of the other windows.
Um. Yeah, I'm okay either way. Um, or just a little bit, I think that, you know, like that.
Okay, that's fine. And, and again, I have no major, I, I, I'm not saying that I don't like it at all. I'm just saying there's, there's two kind of different types of, uh, detailing and architecture going on there. I'm wondering if just simplifying it down a little bit to make it maybe one. And, and if Pam has a preference of one over the other, I'm, I'm completely fine with that. I just feel like they might be almost kind of fighting one another. They typically would only do one detail over there as opposed to two. Um, and again, Pam feels completely different, but I'll, I'll kind of follow her lead on that. Um.
I think that's, we've made up rather than soldier course. We, we left the capital, uh, the, the course terms, we'll just all align. Obviously, you don't want to step down the door, put the problem from panel, from panel below. Instead of brick soldier course, we could do a whole white panel.
I wonder if you raise just the, or just the windows up a little bit to make those all match and then, or no, I'm sorry. You would have to drop those down. Um, no. One of my other comments would be to maybe look at aligning, uh, and I, I'm, I'm on the fence about the, um, the awning overhang around the building. I need to give that a little bit more thought. But I guess if it were to remain, my recommendation would be to actually line it up with your, your tower banding or with your tower banding down.
You'd probably bring, you know, you're bringing down, so I think it'd be easier.
I think so too. And I think that would look nice to have that continuous line. Cause it does, it does jump there. I see where you, I see where this, uh, your, your, the awning aligns with the, the soldier coursing detail that you have there. So I think pulling one of them up or down would be, would be a little bit more ideal. Um.
But you like the, yeah. I'm wondering if you're doing a little bit simpler.
I'm a little bit, I, I think something, a little bit more along the lines of that. And I actually wonder if that might help you not have to have some more of this other detailing. Cause I wonder if, if you were to do a detail similar to that, maybe not as heavy because you're not, that's more signifies an entrance there, I would say. This, um, i- is more of a declaration. And again, I don't have a horrible or a big issue with it. But I also wonder if maybe then if you were to make that a little bit bigger and do a little bit more of that detailing in that photo, if you could eliminate some of the soldier coursing there. Um, I, I'd want to see it though, just before I say definitely do it. But I wonder if you were to, if you were to make that a little bit bigger and then you could do your soldier coursing that would align with the top of where this is, if it would help simplify where you don't need all of that additional brick detailing there. Um, in, in that term. I think, I think the brick pier is kind of going down the line, helping break up the facade a little bit. But I think, again, just the massing, um, having an understanding, I think, of what your floor to floor heights are going to be, would be ideal. Um, I did look at, and your stairs are actually in the back of the building, so not on this side here. So I would say if there's a way to maybe look at, maybe trying to put the mechanic in, again, I don't, without understanding all of the logistics of how, you know, that's like, but I would say maybe even clear mechanics up here. If they.
Well, they would be, they would be. And your access to it, or then also keep the second up and down.
So basically, come on, remember from the first floors.
Correct.
To use this for ops.
Correct.
And then, and then all the, the height right now is set.
We read those, okay. But we can look at. I'm trying to figure out a way just to help you bring the scale of it down a little bit. And if there's a way maybe where you do move the, the units, and again, we'd have to see it. But maybe moving up to the top there and being able to shrink this side of the building a little bit would help that transition from Chipotle as opposed to, and, and you have a little bit of that. But still, I think even a little bit more would be beneficial. Um, and then. Trying to see if there's a, um, way to even. Maybe by bringing that down, if you did a mansory roof right in there, and, and this is just. I would even want to get something like that out myself too. And I'd be more than happy. I, I'm happy to, to talk to Pam about this as well. But I'm wondering if you did a mansory roof there. If that would help soften that up a little bit and you could still put your mechanic units up there as a moment.
It would visually lower it.
It would visually lower it because you're not, it's not just in the front wall. It would bring, it would, it would soften that up a little bit there. You could still keep your units there and to keep the screen behind that. Cause all I'm thinking, that would just be mansored, wouldn't have to be.
It's all the other, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good idea. Which elevation?
That would be the elevation of the front Chipotle. And I'm actually gonna suggest that that same thing gets done on the side that goes next to Paul's position. Kind of enter there as well. Cause I think, again, those two would help soften those sides up quite a bit. I think and not make it as massive. Um, and then again, I, I, just in looking at the way some of this works out, I, I think there might even be some room. And again, that's just my opinion. Maybe we get this down a little bit to, to help bring this in scale a little bit. And then that would help even the back. Cause I do like, I like what you've done back here in terms of the detailing on this back corner where you have the paneling. I think that's a nice touch there. Um, I wonder again, if, if you bring some of, you are able to bring some of this down, it would help it soften a little bit. I think there's, there's definitely some room to, um, to achieve what you want to achieve, but.
That area, that is.
I do know that. And that's why I wanted to know what your floor to floor heights are. Because again, I think there's, it just kind of adding things up in my head. It seems like there might be a little bit extra there. And I wonder if there is some room, even if it's.
Sure.
Do, maybe do something, maybe this doesn't occur, maybe the banding doesn't occur up there. And it just does transition to, maybe your mansory roof does just stop. Um, it doesn't, doesn't have that, that coping up top there that would help it not look as, as massive up there. Sorry, I know you guys mean, I'll see what I'm kind of sketching for.
You gotta get a good angle on it. You think the mansory on the front as well?
I do. I do. I think it's gotta be managed a little bit. I think that'll help soften it. That'll soften it. I think it'll help lower it. Um, I've, I've gotta give some thoughts to that Oculus. Um, I, I want to, and I'm allowed to, to speak with Pam. I think if we have some conversation, or, and, and even, you know, I'm wanting to get on a call with all of us. If that's a lot more, if we will allow that, then maybe kind of all work together. Maybe there's something that would come up that would be your needs, um, and the, what our, our design standards are. I do, I, I just, I don't have an answer for you on that. And I don't want to tell you to change something here.
We've done several versions of it.
If you wouldn't mind sending some of those along to Pam and then maybe Pam can send them to me. That, I think that would be.
We have about a half dozen iterations of it there and pressing button for them further. So, yeah. This is, by the way, this would be the most, most.
Okay, that's, no, that's, that's fine. Even just seeing what that looks like in a couple of different iterations. I mean, being able to give a little feedback that would say. Kind of over something. It doesn't, it doesn't fit right now.
We appreciate that.
As, okay. As it sits right now, it definitely doesn't meet. But I appreciate you guys trying to work with us and being open to what it is. And then we'll, we'll try to give you some good clear direction on that, that maybe would, would meet everyone's desires. I have some ideas in my mind, but I, I'd have to sketch them all before I even want to try to put them all there. Cause I don't know if they, they, for, just, if, or just from a view of standpoint.
Yeah, if I could just interject at this point, I'd really rather have any conversation between you and one of our commission members go through my office or any communications whatsoever. Um, I don't know how appropriate it is to actually have, you know, consulting. I mean, he's, he's a planning commission member. He's a, uh, he's an Ohio professional. Uh, but we have hired a, a design consultant to actually do that type of work. And I wouldn't want to have, uh, one give you one answer and one give you another answer. I want to, it's all got to come from the same spot. So any of the communications, I just want to interject. Just make sure they go, they go through my office and we'll, we'll, you know, we can make it all work. I just got to have a straight line of communication and, and my office is the point of contact.
In your office, is it Pam or?
Uh, Pam actually, I think she actually works directly for the mayor, but she's, uh, serves as our design, our architectural design consultant. I'm actually the building commissioner. So she actually is a branch of my department. Okay?
And I don't want to step out of.
Yeah, no problem, sir.
No.
Bob, to your point, that'd be true with any communication, not just.
Right.
For this particular item or this particular architectural item.
Right. So the, the concern about having a direct communication from an applicant to a planning commission member outside of a meeting, I, I, I don't know what, what legal ramifications there are, but we, we want to be careful with that.
I wouldn't suggest that anyways.
And if I can just add, um, Mr. Rodick, we, we have done that in the past where we've had face-to-face meetings with some expertise on the commission. So Mr. Westbrook's being a traffic engineer has come in and met with an applicant, myself and the mayor, um, to talk about traffic-specific issues. So I think that could go through your office and it'd be appropriate in that, in that context.
Right, yeah.
But not, not telephone calls.
No, no.
And obviously I would very much defer to the law director, who lives here in the city. But I, I do think there's a distinction between the planning commission and Wednesday. We wouldn't be able to have any discussion with what is only appeals member individually. Obviously that is a quasi judicial kind of body, whereas here it's a planning function. But full, absolutely understand going through the city.
I just thought I should have.
Very, very proper.
Add that at the right, at the time.
The only thing that I would just very much like to reiterate and remind everybody is, is the timeline on the construction season. Not losing the construction season. As long as we keep that in mind, I think we're willing to do it.
Very good.
So clearly there's, you know, I think, I think some, some, some work on, on the architectural side of it. Um, from the, the site itself.
Really not that.
It's not, yeah, it's not.
I mean, this is, we're really close. I mean, and if, if, these are the, the comments, we're really close and it's related to the, the market.
From, from the other aspects of the site plan itself, I guess there's, I mean, it all kind of depends on, you know, what happens tomorrow, what you agree with the property owner. Um, I mean, if these things get denied or whatever, it's gonna mess up the site plan. And then we're probably back to square one. So, um, there, and, and the only thing I, I'm not crazy about the site plan is just, we're squeezing so much out of it. There's not a whole lot we can even talk about cause there's no room to do anything. It's building, it's pavement, and then you got like three feet strips around the edge. Um, not crazy about that. I feel like almost we're putting too much on the site. But that's for somebody else to decide and we'll deal with. Um, I don't know if you guys have any other issues. Um, I think tonight, were we looking for, Mr. Chairman, were we looking for preliminary approvals of their?
I, yeah, so I feel like you can issue a preliminary plan approval, um, short of the architectural elevations.
Impending.
Impending BZA approval. And I, and I did look at the sign code and that is indeed a sign by code definition. So they would need to get a variance for additional square footage if that's a desire. That's a desired trait.
Is it just for that or would they also need a variance to allow two signs on one space?
Yes, they would need that as well.
There's two, there's two sign-related variances.
We can, we can talk about that more than a little bit more. I think it's worth it.
We thought it would be made change however.
You wouldn't see, see that on, on the way, so.
Okay.
If, if we're to do something like this though, since it's not a space behind, that could be, um, like a frosted film on the glass or something like that.
I think, I, I think it should be vision glass, but that's, I mean, it's the architect's. It brings in light in the building. To me, it seems like that's what you wanted to.
I would agree. I would want that to be clear glass there. Um, if there were privacy function behind there instead of that, it would be a different story. But I think if, you know, like you had mentioned before, the Oculus does a lot of light. In some of your prototypes, not the specific one, but does a lot of light down to your lobby. I think that could be a nice feature right here. This does let light down into there, um, into your entrance. Do you, and I guess the other thing I would recommend or ask is that a first floor plan submitted to, to help understand what's going on down there. I see the second floor plan, which was helpful, but a first floor plan to understand kind of what's going on right there in the lobby.
There's a waiting area, it sounds like, yeah.
Okay.
Kevin, back to your issue. If we do a preliminary, I think it's, it's subject to a whole bunch of contingencies. What is the alternative than approving a preliminary today? Be it a table it or something, or what would, you'd rather not do that, I know.
I mean, there's a couple of, I mean, tabling is one thing that could happen, but I guess in terms of the site plan, again, we really have a problem with the site plan itself. You know, the driveways, the layout of parking, the, where the building sits, the access, the setbacks, that's-
What is our, our options? Is preliminary approval subject to about 10 different things?
Not, not so much, I guess the, the preliminary approval, Mr. France, would only be really subject to the BZA approvals.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, there's not a lot you can do with the site, it's, it's a little under an acre, and, you know, so they have limitations with roads and such, so they're, they're going to request those variances, and if they get those variances, they'll have the ability to perform the plan as provided. I don't think what Mr. Wallenhurst, or we've talked about, will impact the, the bones of the structure, and so I don't see a reason why you can't issue a preliminary plan approval devoid of the architecture. I think you need to work that out still.
So can we do a plan approval of the site and table the architecture, or the architecture would have to be, or you'd have to come back through for a separate approval, is there a way to sort of that way?
Would that just be part of the final plan approval, the architecture, or do we specifically mention that that's still being addressed?
I would, if I were in your position, I'd just motion approval for, to provide preliminary plan approval, with the exception of architecture, that that will come back. If you're, find that the architecture, when it comes back, is sufficient upon final plan approval, you can approve it all at once. If not, then they need to come back for architecture approval. I, I suspect it'll come back in a different form that will be much closer, because I don't think they're really, I don't think you're that far off. There's elements that can be changed that will make this compliant.
Which honestly are typical elements that almost always change between preliminary and final, if you really think of what we're talking about. Some of these things are normally, you know, that's what happens between preliminary and final.
You do, you, you have some, as, as I said, you have some, you have some massing issues, scale issues that I think you can work out, as Mr. Wallenhurst was pointing out. There's ways to pull elements down on the building so it doesn't look so bulky and clunky on the site compared to the adjoining buildings. There are ways to do that. I am concerned about the Oculus window, that I, I don't see how you're going to fit that into Western Reserve architecture. If I were in your position, I'd have a serious conversation when I walk out the door about that, that Oculus window, because that's the one piece I, I just, and I'm not an architect, but I've been around this a long enough time, I don't see how you're going to fit that in to the, to the architectural style.
Mr. France, what about the signage?
It's a separate, it has to be a separate submission.
It's a separate submission, they're going to seek out a variance. I, I think that there will be no misunderstanding that this is a, that this is their brand when they're done, if they get the variance. There's a lot of signage on this building, short of the one just behind the glass, so I think there's a lot of signage. If they get approved, all that additional signage, there'll be no escaping if that's what this building is.
So I guess if we were to do a preliminary approval, really the only things we're saying is, is BZA, I mean, BZA approvals need to be done, and excluding the architecture, which is-
Excluding this, yeah.
That we revisit, it's time to separate.
Right.
Everything, yeah, everything's the whole.
Why don't you make that motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval, contingent on BZA approval of the items you've got in front of them, and excluding the architecture, which is still being worked in. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and more discussion?
Yeah, yeah. I have a little problem with that because it's not really resolved, one here or the other, so it's kind of hard to get, I, I kind of agree with the cause. What are we giving preliminary approval to? Because it's a vast thing here, it's a minimalist, it's growing, and how can you give a preliminary approval for that? I, you know, I, I wish there was another term that we could use, I don't want to hold them up, but I'm not saying we disapprove it, but I'm saying an approval of some type indicates that, yes, this is somewhat what we want, but it really isn't though.
I guess what it really is, is it's more like this sheet, is kind of what's getting approved. This is the plan sheet that shows the footprint of the site, shows the footprint of the building, shows their access points, shows how many parking spots they've got, width of their aisles, their setbacks, which don't need code, but they're going for BZA, so unless someone says there's no way I would ever approve a new BZA, then that's set, the footprint of the building, which I don't think the footprint's going to change, it's, it's, what, what, what needs to come back is the signage from the ground up of the building, landscaping, you know, so those kind of issues.
The architecture too.
Approving preliminarily everything on the ground.
So it gives us a chance to give a final approval of the next year.
And if they would go to BZA and be like, shut down, shut down, shut down, well, they're going to have to come back to the tables, and what could they possibly do, which is going to-
If I may, just really quickly, why, why we're requesting this, if we go to the BZA and work the issues out, we'll finish our site work development, and we can go out for mid-site get pricing, we still try to be the weather just for the site.
That's what I was going to ask, is that what your plan would be, to get your site package completed, if every BZA approves everything?
I think it's also the same too, is we're not going to ask for any new changes, we're not going to say, close this driveway and put one off of the access road, and close that and put it over here, and I think we figured out that the trash enclosure, that's the best spot for it, so we're not going to push the building against the back and have all the parking in front, things like that. Everything from the ground up, that's still being discussed.
That helps, you could, I can turn it out of there on the back. So that's, that's good for the classification for type, though.
And if I can, just to, maybe, this will make the commission, you know, feel a little more comfortable with it. Technically, your preliminary plan approval is more of a conceptual plan approval than anything in the code, and it builds on the need to get the final plan approval, which is where you approve your, your architecture, according to 113705. So issuing that tonight, really, I'd argue, you could even not even say that the architecture is approved or not approved, because architecture is the piece that's approved during final plan approval, you know.
So you've mentioned that they're specific, it would be necessary, you have to mention that we're still working on architecture. Does that make you older?
Somewhat.
It moves the case along a little, so you're not held up, that's the point. It sounds like a big asset to our community, if you can come in here.
Well, what it, what it does is it tells these guys, as they walk out of the room, you're willing to approve this thing with modifications to the architecture, which it sounds like that can be achieved. And I, and I do really firmly believe the Oculus window is probably the most significant piece you need to have a heart, heart to heart about, because I don't, I just don't know how you're going to make that work in this style of architecture. With that said, everything else can be achieved.
The Oculus says that, and you're for the Oculus, that's the, that's the cut-in, right? That's not the, the glass, the brick glass, that's the cut-in. That's, that's-
Insert. Does that have to, does that have to cut in? Could it just be a, a clear store window at that location? Could it just, I guess I was doing a little sketching here, could it just come to the front elevation, and I guess, does it have to step back, or could it be pulled forward so that it still gives, you're, I guess I would consider that window being a signatory to it?
Why don't we go over that with Pam?
So that's exactly what I was going to say, every other comment-
Yeah, we do this with Pam.
Yeah.
I want to be dated here.
I just asked that suggestion so that you maybe think about it ahead of time, and Pam can then weigh in on that.
Yeah, that's, that's we should weigh in.
You have that conversation.
Just because the design agency, they showed that Oculus, and that was like number one on the presentation, that the layers, the skin, we have some, some work to do with Oculus and our plan.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Six more things, ladies and gentlemen. Let me see, for a quick, any other issues? Oh, I'll take all this over.
Everybody has to sign that one.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is an issue with this.
I will bring, I work at the hospital.